Councilwoman Jackson, before we go to the citizen's request, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bev, do you mind if I attorney go first prior to the citizen's request? Think I see how many meetings he needs to get to? And Mr. Wayne Vaughn?
You're ready? Thank you all. I'll have Mr. Vaughn come up here.
Mr. Vaughn brought this to me last week, y'all. This is Hicks Properties LLC. It's buying some property on Felix Road off of Memphis River Parkway. It's kind of by ladies number two across the street from NJ Fitness, that area. They're planning on manufacturing pallets. The state of Alabama has a code section that allows certain industries to have a certain code that allows the city to abate taxes. Non-educational property taxes, so educational taxes should go in the school system. It allows the city to abate sales and use taxes for a one-time purchase to get into operation. So, buying equipment, material, fix up the building, things of that nature. I wanted to read, y'all, because it's been a while, I think, since the city's done this. This is different than the 772. I know y'all are familiar with that. This doesn't require public hearing. You do it by resolution, specifically industries, certain industries that they qualify. The code, the legislature finding says, "The legislature recognizes the importance of industrial development and well-being of the people of the state. Legislature also recognizes that industry attracts a number of factors, including natural resources, trained workforce, good roads, excellent education." Legislature allows, recognizes that in some cases additional incentives are required to succeed in attracting new industries and encourage existing industries to expand, and intends to continue to allow counties, municipal governments to provide taxing incentives. So, the whole purpose of it is to get industries into the city. And so, what Mr. Vaughn asked me to do, I'll just talk to you guys about this. There's some numbers coming up, y'all. Hicks Properties LLC expects to have a capital investment of $347,000. Expect to employ about six or 20 people. By year three, the non-educational property tax abated, and these are kind of rough numbers. It's $10,548. Again, that's over the whole 10 years, alright? And then the sales tax abated is roughly $4,300. Again, that's kind of a one-time deal when Hicks Properties is putting it into operation. Yeah, start-up cost. And the educational tax not abated, that's actually gonna go to the school systems from this property tax. And sales tax over the years is about $10,000 over 10 years. So, the way it's done is by resolution. I sent a draft resolution, and the resolution allows the city to enter into this tax agreement. So, I wanted to present that to y'all and just see if you have any questions. And Mr. Vaughn's here too, if you have any questions. And Mr. Hicks is here also, if you have any questions about the operation.
Councilwoman Jackson?
My phone just went off. And I don't want it to ring. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanna get the gist of what you're describing to us and also the forwarded email that we received as well. So, you're asking for, this is for one time over a period of time. And the initial amount seems like it's going to be about probably $15,000, somewhere, but 14,000, 15,000 grand total, nothing else wrapped. And it's non-educational, that's not messing with those taxes right there.
That's right. And that statute says that, so we couldn't do that.
Okay. And so, over this period of 10 years, this business will come, and they will employ the number of people that we said, and the city will have helped out in the way of about $15,000.
That's good.
Thank you.
Let me add one thing you may do, which it won't cost y'all anything. AIDT does a training, and we're probably gonna solicit them to train his employees. But that's a good thing, and it gets them started up, it keeps your turnover down. And once this is approved, what they have...
That's perfect. AIDT is gonna be perfect. I used them, Wayne did the training for me. AIDT did the training for me when I was working with adults who had young people in certain programs. The way you treat the families, you treat the whole family. So, I applaud the values of AIDT. And Wayne has the data on it, and you're making a good choice to use our local AIDT. So, thank you for that.
Also, it strengthens the workforce of that. I think I seen Councilman Shaw, then Councilwoman Jackson.
I just wanna take this opportunity to thank Mr. Hicks for investing in Selma. The property that you were speaking of, the construction costs remain when you go down the road, and the property's kinda hidden.
It's on the same side of the street as ladies.
Do you know where the old Kelly's building was?
Yeah.
It's that bit.
Prince Lamar.
Yeah.
I should've said that.
I just, I mean, I just want to thank Mr. Hicks. And for still overseeing, and for investing in the city. I'm sure he's in good way.
That building's been out of service for like five years. So, we'll get a building back in service, and we'll get some more.
Thank you, Councilman Shaw. Councilwoman Jackson.
Same, the same sentence, Councilman Shaw. But also, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. And thank you, Mr. Vaughn, for doing an excellent job, based off the information that is at the land's meeting. I really enjoyed knowing everything that comes into Dallas County, knowing where and how many jobs that we do have. So, I wanna thank you. Thank you for considering Selma, and thank you for all the you do in Selma and Dallas County, bringing this to us.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Thank you. I really, it sounds like everything's positive, and I'm glad to hear that. This is in war too. And I know that the EDA's been trying, working to try to get something in here. I have spoken with a couple of people also that were interested in the possibilities over here. I am just deliriously happy. This is a great location, a great place, and it's a waste, you know, to not have a business in it. So, I am thrilled to see this. And I'm thrilled to see such positivity on the council, because this gives a clear message to other people, other businesses in Selma, that we are indeed open for business. So, this is a great thing. And thank you. I'd like to meet Mr. Hicks before this is in order.
This is my, this is my...
Thank you. And I look forward to seeing y'all again, if I could shake a hand. Not far from where I live. But anyway, and thank y'all. Look forward to talking to you in the future.
Councilwoman Shaw?
I just wanna, again, reiterate the appreciation for the EDA and you, sir, for, you know, investing in our community. Obviously, you know, in this time of all the stuff we've got swirling around, it's great to see people willing to invest, and I'm seeing the true nature of what Selma really is, is community, and I'm glad you saw that, sir. Appreciate you locating here, and hopefully, everything will go swimmingly well. And it's finally nice to be a part of the city council, and we're doing something that's pro-business. So often, I feel like things that we're not doing, or we're trying to do, aren't gonna resonate well, but this is definitely a pro-business sentiment, and I am happy to be a part. Moving forward with this abatement, hopefully, we'll be coming up with the next abatement as well, and we'll go forward just as well as this one. So, thank you, Woody. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Wayne, did you see making pallets for pellets?
Pallets.
Pallets.
Yeah, we're doing pellets out by...
In the industrial park, okay. Wood pallets. Wooden pallets. If you had looked on Pinterest lately, there are a lot of decorating things you can do with pallets.
Yeah, I do look it up. I can make it happen.
They use it for everything.
The wow, correct.
We might have to have a little contest for advertising.
Also, two council members, I think our next move, if you go ahead, what is gonna get me the resolution? I think I should already have it. We move forward tomorrow. That's what we're opening up for some gentlemen.
There's a bright idea, I believe.
You'll get the resolution, and it's allow the city to enter into an agreement, and you got the agreement to...
Thank you.
The agreement's pretty straightforward from, I think, the property revenue.
What I have to do in the process, once you sign off on that, I've gotta send it to revenue. Revenue sends it back to me. They get a tax number for the sales tax abatements, and then everything stops.
Councilmember, I'll say you left the tax, that's why I'm... Any other questions? Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vaughn. Anything else, Mr. Woody?
No.
Anything else, Charlie?
Also, before I leave, I'm bowling with the 772, all the same day, just coming up tomorrow for a public hearing at 4:00 here, 4:45. And then, if you want to, you can make action on it. Then, Harry probably be here with Mr. Lewis, not me, just 'cause I've got a bunch of baseball games coming up. But one of us will be here with Mr. Lewis, and he's told us he's probably coming, so if Mr. Lewis says he'll be here to answer the questions too. But, you know, one of us, Harry, I'll be here. We looked at it in detail. We may still make a little bit of the changes to the agreement, but it's basically the same thing that's been the whole time.
Alright, that's the public hearing tomorrow, 4:45, prior to the council meeting, 4:07.
So, Attorney, you're saying that even maybe tweaks a little bit, is it to a point where approving or voting tomorrow after the public meeting is appropriate to do, your answer legally?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Attorney.
Also, too, before you, Hicks, stage left, if you could, I think we have something about the parking.
Yeah.
Public parking downtown. Can you look into that also?
Yes.
Okay.
Why is this still here? Nothing has changed from what we talked about concerning the 772, has it? Nothing major?
No. I think some, I mean, we're adding things. So, he's gotta say how many employees he expects to hire, so he's giving us those numbers, I think it's 30 to 40, and then roughly how much he's gonna spend on that. I think we're looking at like $600,000. When he expects to start, July is what he's thinking. So, it's kind of those kind of things that are gonna change. The numbers as far as the taxing, I think 25% of, 6% of lodging tax, and 25% of the city's sales tax is still what we're saying.
That is right there. Okay, so, and I just missed it, all of that talking, the 25% sales tax, I heard, I heard it, I absolutely heard it clearly, the 25% hotel tax. Did you say that the last time too?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just missed that part. So, that part I will be meditating on.
Yeah, definitely. It's more, it's in it, so, yeah.
Okay.
Councilwoman Shaw?
You just asked him a question about looking into the section code about the parking. Okay, we did. I do have something today, yes, I've got the section code for the city about that.
Before Mr. Jones gets away, and I had talked with, I sing in the choir with Harry and Bill. And we were talking about bills the other day. And while you were here, and I see Janie, Ms. Councilwoman Thomas, has something about water board agreement, does that have anything to do with garbage bills?
No, this is, something different.
Okay, just, alright, okay. Well, I guess is this an appropriate time to go ahead and ask about that? I talked with Bill about it, but maybe we should do that, talk about that another time. But that's what, 'cause I had talked, I think I mentioned to you, I talked with Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get together whenever it wants to.
Okay, we'll let you know something on that tomorrow.
You have a question, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
And then you have your first question.
Your contact?
Listen.
Yes, I have tomorrow, I'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
You need it to you, or you wanna come by and get it?
I'll come and get it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, on the first place.
On the first place.
Good luck tonight, though. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, I'm Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Now, to the citizens' requests, Ms. Terry, reserve park, Ms. Perry.
Good afternoon. I'm Kirsten Harris, I own KD Right on Prom, right here downtown. We've been having problems with parking for our customers. They're always parking in the alley, or they're not coming by at all. They'll call us, and it's just been an issue of parking due to the Mexican restaurant, and then by us not having a person coming around checking for the 30-minute parking. So, we have people parking there for two or three hours at a time. So, I created a reserve sign for two spaces directly in front of my store, and it's just asking if they, you know, for reserved parking from 11 to 6 for my store. And so, the building inspector came in and said that I needed to come and bring it forth to the council. And I also printed out pictures, 'cause I didn't bring the sign, of course, but they are removable. I can move them in and out. And I took a picture of the close-up sign and the two, and it's just asking, I mean, people still park there. It's not like we go out there and chase them down, telling them to move, but we're just saying, by us being prom season and our business is picking up, we're just saying that we can get the reserved parking, just the two spaces directly in front of my store.
Alright, Councilwoman Benjamin, and Councilwoman Thomas?
Thank you so much, Ms. Perry. Let me plug your store one more time. It's KD Right on Prom on Broad Street. I want to thank you for the beautiful, beautiful job that you are doing there. We have another building downtown on Broad Street that we can be proud of. Your window dressing is out of sight, it's dynamite. No wonder people are having problems parking trying to get to you. I would, and I did, and I used you for prom this year, and people have dug my son in best dressed, because you helped him pick a classic tuxedo. So, I, I see, I've seen, I've seen this, I've been shopping there. I don't see where there would be a problem for that, because I know that you, the benefit for the city is that we have a Mexican restaurant there. That's a benefit. The other side of it is that we also have a whole lot of other businesses on that same street that also need parking for their customers. So, I am for it. I'm for you having those two spaces. I saw your turn frame on there when I pulled up and parked in front of one of them to shop with you, and so I just appreciate that, that you, the building inspector, came, you made no fuss about it, you gave it right to the council as he has told you. And so, I am for you having those two spaces between the hours of 11 and 6, and like you said, you can remove them at any time. If you needed to remove them, you can just remove them at any time, but I am for it.
Okay, Councilwoman Thomas, and Councilwoman Goyway?
I seen them too, you have them there. But this is another issue too, with another business, we want to put two signs up too. So, this council, we agree, you know, we have a section code about that, which you came before the council. If we agree, that means that any other business, if we both say agree and allow you to do that, you have another business in place right now, have a confrontation about parking just like you have for their customer. And I believe in doing things right. So, if we agree for that, we should, like we should be, it'd have to be for the other business.
And Barry?
That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Goyway, and Councilwoman Thomas?
Well, the signs are, well, I'm only for, you know, the possibility of one sign, 'cause the parkings are limited down there, and everybody deserves, nobody owns that. My business has been downtown for 20 years, and I never could reserve a spot for my business either, and I know exactly how you go, 'cause people couldn't come to my store either, or my shop is the case for me. But I think if it's used as a deterrent, just to suggest perhaps that that sign is there, and that spot is reserved for that one particular endeavor between the hours of 11 and 6, that makes sense, of course, the Mexican restaurant closes at 2:00. So, after 2:00, you don't have that Mexican traffic. You do have it at 5:00, so it does affect your latter stages. But I am for at least looking at the possibility of having one parking spot designated for it, because like you said, Ms. Thomas, it creates a Pandora's Box, and you're gonna have everybody everywhere looking to get parking spots. And so, if you could say, well, we can look at doing maybe one, because you're not taking too much out of the parking area, then at least that's something that can be done, and hopefully will be appropriate for you at least. But two, in that area would be very hard, because you're gonna push traffic around. But most importantly, she would be not having this issue if the first part of what she said was actually acupon, and has never been acupon consistently in the 20 years that Madison Associates has been downtown. And that's having the meter readers come through there and chalk tires every 30 minutes to ensure that those folks live there, 'cause you have the folks that live, or that have the business just between your cars and yourself, they park in front of their business on a regular basis. And then you have people that live up above that little boutique, Trendy Cheek, whatever it is boutique right there, that live above their business. And so, you have cars that are gonna be there for longer than 30 minutes, that can bounce to the sides, bounce to the other side, to not be on that main thoroughfare right there on Broad Street to allow people to park at your business. So, I think what I'd like to see is us try to get some sort of meter reading capability going down there, because again, it's revenue, and if we just put a put the, I think the meter reading, if I remember correctly, they give you a ticket, it's a red envelope. The red envelope allows you to put a check or money into it, and then if you just put a lock box on the corners, like they do in Auburn and other places, you can just drop your money in the lock box, and that takes care of it all.
Attorney Jones is already looking into it.
Well, that's good. I've asked, I asked George Evans to do this back when he was city council president, and he failed to do it then, so it'd be nice if he could get it done in the next 20 years, because it's only been something I've been talking about for 20 years. So, it's crazy. Because it's ridiculous.
Councilwoman Jackson, and...
Yes, it is, and back in, I'm older than y'all, I think I'm set for, I think Council and Shaw, I might, might be, our teeth might be about the same length, but I, and we're a bit older than y'all are. So, y'all wouldn't remember the days of parking meters and the, oh, this lawyer, okay. Lord. Maybe, 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 oh, Janie, maybe, buddy, she would come around there, and if you were there over two hours and she happened to see you, she made you feel like you had a dead child sitting on your finger, just like when you were speeding, going down, going down, but anyway, I used to work at Alabama Gas when it was on 5 Broad Street up here on Broad Street. That was when downtown was vibrant before. And I say before, because I believe that it's going closer to being vibrant again. We get closer and closer to it, you know, every day. I see things happen, good things. But one of the things that I believe probably happens, and this is just my guess, that there is probably some employee parking for people that work at some of the businesses, and we're glad to see, we're glad to see the stores, we're glad to see the businesses down there, the labor source businesses, we're real glad to see that. And, you know, the maider maid, and the child lady, or man, as, guess my day, certainly keeps that in perspective. But I know some of the businesses downtown have their employees park in other areas, like I go to church, Lauderdale Street, and they have their people park, you know, they think the employees get in trouble if they park on, you know, where customers should be parked. I know in 1976 through 79, when I worked downtown until I had my first child, I had to rent a space from the city of Selma, and that parking lot right by where the Welcome Center is, the city of Selma rented parking spaces. And then, it was $6 a month. Of course, I think minimum wage then was like $3.25 an hour, or maybe even less at the time, but anyway. So, I think the city may want to look at something like that, and we certainly do need to ask the chief of police with all this switching around in the budget that we've been doing lately, surely we can switch around a little bit of money for a meter maid, or a meter man, or a child person to go around and do that, that would certainly pay for itself. And then, that little bit of rent money, that would open up, there have been times when I had been gonna go in businesses, I can never get that cute little monogram shop, you know, right there from you, and that I wanna go in. Now, I know that Carter's has that thing that says for, that one little place in the front that says for, yeah, well, they have things that says for Carter's to give curbside service. And I remember when that was done, and that was the reason, the reason was because they can't do a drive-in there, and there have been people who are real sick, that really can't come in, but they've been released from the hospital, or they've been to the doctor's office, and the people at the drugstore come out and bring them medicine. In fact, I've gone in, they've brought it out to me before. And so, they, we've done for that. It may have to be that we have to do something else on that too, or we may need to go back for parking meters, just on the first two blocks of Broad Street or something. But we need to do something that is fair, that gives our businesses a fair shake. You're right, because we appreciate what you're doing down there. I love that we have good businesses, oh, I love the pretty window dresses, like, window dressing, like Councilwoman Benjamin said, that attracts people, it brings people to downtown. But we do need to look at that, and things need to be done differently. And, but I tell you what, I think, oh, Mr. Preston, your public safety, and I'm telling you, I think we'd be inclined to real sight to say, I don't know who I was exactly, I think Councilwoman...
Thomas.
Oh, Thomas, and I, listen, I think we could just say, go on and get the chief to say, we agree, we want, we want a child person, real quick, chalking tires, 'cause we want, you know, immediately. But I think that we will look at that and think about it, because you need to, you're deserving of a fair shake as any guy down there, so, and every other businesses too.
And I came up with the two parking spaces, 'cause I counted them, and the way that they were, and that's why I just did, I did two, 'cause it looks like, it was like two, 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 you know, for each, for each business, not including the head.
Well, another thing we have to consider too is, for instance, when I go to town, when I'm in the mood, I have to be in the mood to go shopping. And I'm gonna go to, to maybe, especially if I'm gonna look, I'm gonna hit several stores right there, that are right there in a row. And another thing too, is one of the, one of the reasons for our downtown, that we're invested so much in downtown, and like, we want other thugs from other areas, the tourists that come, people that are coming through, we want them to stop, they want to stop too. And so, we certainly don't want to just come down hard on them, but we don't want them to sit and, you know, marinate all day there, or take up the space when they're just walking around. So, but, that's, you know, it's just... Just to think, don't laugh at me.
Thank you, Councilwoman, yeah, yeah. Councilwoman Benjamin, and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Jackson?
I'm gonna get my, get my wife ready, just a minute.
Yeah. I've been telling this man to make babies, get a wife and make babies, and now he's made the announcement, congratulations. So...
I just...
So, really, Councilwoman, we have a person before us that has come for a reason. She's come for the reason of reserved parking, and she's come for us to make this decision on her business concerning reserved parking while we meditate on all this other stuff that we have said. In the meantime, what she's saying is she has traffic around her business. I understand the code that Councilwoman Thomas has given to Councilwoman Bowie, because, so this is why you have this from the inspector, alright? So, I know the story behind why you have this from the inspector. On down Broad Street, that's not in downtown, it's not actually in downtown, there was a potential altercation almost. And then, we had a city employee to represent themselves as a police officer, asking what stated to us, and they are not, and we know that's erroneous.
Well, that's...
I couldn't say it was... But we don't want them to sit and, you know, marinate all day there, and take up the space when they're just walking around. So, but, that's, you know, it's just.
Thank you, Councilwoman Yelena, Councilwoman Benjamin, and Councilwoman Jackson. I'm gonna get my, get my wife ready to dress up.
I've been telling this man to make babies, get a wife and make babies, and now he's made the announcement, congratulations. So. So, really, Councilwoman, we have a person before us that has come for a reason. She's come for the reason of reserved parking. And she's come for us to make this decision on her business concerning reserved parking while we meditate on all this other stuff that we have said. In the meantime, what she's saying is she has traffic around her business. I understand the code that Councilwoman Thomas has given to Councilwoman Bowie, because, so this is why you have visit from the inspector, all right? So I know the story behind why you have this from the inspector. On down Broad Street, that's not in downtown, it's not actually in downtown, there was a potential altercation almost. And then we had a city employee to represent themselves as a police officer, asking what was stated to us in there or not. And we know that's a felonious. I couldn't say it was different, but it is a felonious offense. And we know that no one from the city would do that, because it's a felonious offense. And so this had nothing to do with your business. It had everything to do with something happening on down Broad, way down Broad Street. It had the potential to blow up. And a business owner said, well, then I need parking in front of my business. It trickled down to City Hall, it trickled down to you, somehow it trickled down to you. No one bought a Carter Drug, Carter Drug has been there forever with their sign. There was no problem with it, it would not have been a problem with your sign. I don't believe it would have been a problem with anybody saying anything about your sign at all. I saw your sign a long time ago. I've seen Carter Drug's sign a long time ago. I don't think it would have, you would not have gotten a visit, in my opinion, from a building inspector, had it not been because someone else visited someone else's businesses, and it had a potential to blow up physically, like turn it into something physical. And I don't think it would be before us. But what we have before her is her asking us about reserved parking. So whether we're gonna do one or two, I think we need to let her know, at least temporarily, leave it there until we make a decision, or we're gonna make a decision, a decision expeditiously. In the meantime, we have someone who pays her taxes and has customers that need to get to her. We need to make a decision on that right away. And in my opinion, we need to go on tomorrow, whether she keeps or not keeps, or temporarily say, keep both of them until we make a decision. Because us up here at Alabama Gas thing does not help her business at all. She needs to know whether those signs need to stay, or those signs need to go. And again, I'm all for your signs staying, and I know the background of why you received the visit from a building inspector.
Well, I think that we actually have, from my standpoint, not yours, we have a good problem. We have so many people visiting downtown, your business in particular, that is causing there to be a shortage of parking spaces. Yay, we could have a graveyard down there, no one is visiting. And so I'm excited about that, I'm thankful that you came with a solution. You said, hey, this is what I'm trying to do. And so I'm in agreement with working something out temporarily till we can find a long-term fix. It doesn't matter to me whether it's one or two, but I think that this city needs to determine a long-term solution for this matter. But I'm actually excited about it, and I won't tell you, I almost had my accident looking at your window. Good thing it leaps, so, but they're beautiful, beautiful. And I'm always wondering, can I get in there? You know, so. Right, they're beautiful. And I'm absolutely elated to have it on Broad Street, to have this issue come before the city. This is not something that we can't work out. I think, but we need to do something temporarily, so you can finally, in this era where you're having a lot of customers who come down in the inner city, find a solution. But thank you for your investing in Selma, thank you for your wonderful window. Maybe next year, we can have some type of contest.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Bowie, and Councilwoman.
I think Ms. Perry said it, you know, she's not, she's not going out there and hitting you with a stick if you park at a parking spot. I mean, it's just to say, like the Carter's sign, I mean, people pull in there and park all the time that don't even use Carter's. But, I mean, Carter's can't run you off, you know, but at the same time, it's just to say, hey, if you are a conscientious person and you do care about your downtown businesses, you won't park there. You know, I myself have parked in that spot, and you and I discussed that. I had run into Carter's real quick, so I stopped there, ran into Carter's, got out and got out. Because I know how important it is to have those spots, because I've had a business downtown, and I've worked with a lot of businesses downtown that have gone through this, back when Butler Truax was open. And we had more businesses downtown, so it's always been a problem. And again, the meter maids are the solution, or meter reading people, are the solution that probably failed to implement that on a regular basis. So I would hope that we would do twofold. One, agree to let you have a sign that you can use as a deterrent, again, only deterrent, not enforceable by law. And then two, we go ahead and see if we can't get the police chief to get these meters done. And three, get the metal boxes so there's an immediate payment location for that to be remitted, so you don't have a million dollars worth of unpaid fines sitting out there that we can't go get. Because that's where we're gonna go. If we do this, and put meter maids on there, and they give you a ticket, and you don't pay it, and no one ever says anything, well, then that's not gonna solve the problem. There's no deterrent there. So I think having a fine that is deterrent enough to make them move their vehicles on time and fashion, have the meter readers ensure that they do move them, is in essence the long-term solution that we're looking for. But in the meantime, I do agree that we need to do something to help this lady run her business, especially during prom season. And I think it's only fair that she has a spot to use as a deterrent for people not to park in that particular spot. They will, and she knows that. But hopefully, the people that are down there are conscientious folks and accountable to somebody, because Lord knows the city of Selma's unaccountable committee, and wants to do the right thing for the right reasons and let this woman have her parking spot.
Councilman Lushor. I might call you Councilwoman Lushor. Back your phone.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yes, I do. Councilwoman. I wanna say to this panel, when we do, back then, when some of these councils were sitting up here, they did these codes. You know, the city have codes on the card, the things that you do in the city. And when these incidents, when we have these things, problems with parking and, you know, at the time, we wasn't, I wasn't a council, and maybe some other people wasn't up here, but there were some codes put in. There's a lot of codes put in on different things that have happened. And maybe if we, if we're gonna agree to this, I think that we need to go back and look at the section code that this falls upon. Because, you know, we've got your code.
Mr. President, I want to ask that we put this on consent agenda, while we make up our mind concerning what it is that we're, you know, we have to be in official business to make up our minds, so we can't make up our minds today. We have to be in official business to make up our mind what we're gonna do about the parking situation downtown. While we look at the code that Councilwoman Thomas brought to us, can we at least put this on consent agenda?
Ms. Thomas, your point is well, you know, well said. Those codes were put in when we had a different city.
No, the codes were put in, at least, I did research on this code. This code was drawn at the time of the parking center.
Again, it was put in when we had a different city.
Yes, but you never changed the code.
Again, let me finish out, if I could. The codes were from a different time in our city's history. When we had meter maids that were actively pursuing those tickets on a regular basis. I know, because I was downtown.
But do you know what this code said?
I'm not addressing the code. What I'm trying to say is that I hope we can go back to the code, is what I'm trying to say, Ms. Thomas. Let me finish. I hope we can get back to the code and put that into place, that we have the meter maids or some sort of way to deter people or to incentivize people from moving their vehicles so they don't park for three or four hours. Because that's in essence the problem. So until we can determine that, I think the code's a valuable thing, and something we shouldn't go away from. We need to put in something that's gonna supersede that code, which is to get the meter maids back online, so they get, or meter readers, so they get back online to ensure, or chalk markers, and get back online so we can get that going again, because that's what's not happening, and that's why you're having people not move their vehicles on a regular basis. And I can speak from twenty years' experience downtown to say that's the case. So we can argue all day, but I know exactly what she's going through, because I've gone through it myself, and the businesses I've worked with downtown have gone through it. So, yes, I'd like to see the code be more appropriate, but until we get those meter readers, we can't enact that code. We gotta figure out some sort of temporary solution. And I assume this is a temporary solution until we go long-term, which is to make sure those codes can be upheld, as well to have somebody to enforce the law.
Mr. President, can we release the citizens?
One of them will be removed come the end of May, because my prom season will be over. And so I'm just, I just need that one then. And then come February of next year, that I would like to.
Well, yeah, I have a question.
I'm trying to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have another question. It doesn't have anything to do with parking. But you know that little bush in front of my store? Okay, it's overgrown, and I wanna plant some flowers around it. Y'all not gonna pull up my flowers if I plant them. No, we didn't. Oh, okay.
It's amazing that one of those bushes just disappear overnight. I'm surprised.
Don't get hurt, we not allowed.
Gone.
No, I just, I just wanna clean it up.
No, it's just amazing how they just disappear. You notice that?
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell? Pride Day event, twenty nineteen.
It's time again, I'm ready.
All right. My time, you know, Council. I'm doing well. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin, for, Ms. Benjamin came outside Friday event last year. It was really small, intimate last year. But this year, because of the work we've been able to do with our organization, we're having, expecting to have a lot larger term. Our organization, TKO Society, as of December of last year, we became Alabama's first transgender and queer-led aid service organization. We're proud to say that we're one of maybe nine organizations in the nation that has that privilege. We are clearly certified by the federal government, and we do non-clinical testing. Our Project Faith program, which we actually got the certification for, has gotten us national recognition from Elton John, AIDS Foundation, Elizabeth Taylor AIDS Foundation, and a few other national organizations. I'll be featured this year in The Advocate, which is a national LGBTQ magazine, online magazine and publication, and I'll be one of their recipients for the work that we're doing in rural areas like Selma. We teamed up with the Center for Black Equity, which is getting ready to send me to Stanford University in California to participate in the executive leadership position. I'll be the youngest executive director in this program of about forty or fifty people, sitting across in a room, and opportunity to learn for a week, with executive directors from companies like Uta Packer, other Fortune 500 companies like Globe, Fortune 500 companies from all across the world. Forty people internationally, and I'll be the youngest person there representing Selma, representing trans and queer folks, and also representing executives, directors like myself. I started this company from the ground, with no resources, with a thousand dollars. And now our budget has tripled over the last three years. We're currently still considered a small organization, but our budget's around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And we started with a thousand dollars. What we wanna do, we understand the importance of Pride season for people like ourselves. What's remarkable about the work that we're doing is that we're doing it in a place, in the deep south, on an open, out, transgender man, living in Selma, Alabama, born and raised here. And we're making national news, and we want Selma to be as progressive as we are. So what, they were asking, asking you to come out and participate, if you would, if you had time, and participate in our Pride events. We have three events that weekend, May third through fifth. We have an art gallery that's opening up that Friday night. We'll be doing, we actually just had, got some funding to produce a documentary that's telling the story of queer and trans folks, and the reason why it's so important for us. I don't know if you watched the news, but on yesterday, you had a ninth grader out of Huntsville, Alabama, fifteen-year-old killed, Nigel Shelby, committed suicide. And January of this year, the first black transgender woman to be killed in the US was killed in Montgomery. These are places that we frequent all the time, areas that we grow up in, areas that we work in, and areas that we test in. And when it comes down to it, the real nations that we don't have, people like myself don't have federal protection. There are no state, there are no statutes for hate crimes. So people like Dana, her case won't be tried. We have other people who've passed in Alabama alone who won't get justice because we don't have ordinances, and we don't have laws that protect people like myself. So the importance of Pride Day for us is that we have an opportunity to come into a safe space, where we can be ourselves, we can be whole, live our authentic truths, and be able to share each other's work, and also be able to share the resources that are provided to us. So what I'm asking today is that I do have a lineup of the events that we'll have. And if you're free, if you can come out and just talk to our people and kind of welcome them to Selma, that would be great for us. Again, we have an art gallery that Friday night is gonna be, all the events are gonna happen at the Nonviolent Center. We're gonna have an art gallery and screening of our documentary that night. That Saturday, we're gonna have our Pride Festival. And this year, I don't know if you're familiar with Jamarcus Lee, but Jamarcus is from Selma, American Idol. So Jamarcus now goes by Asher Hubble. They will be performing at the festival for us. They have a concert, they have a meet and greet. And then we also have Bob the Drag Queen, who's from RuPaul's Season Eight winner, who's gonna come out and perform for our after-party. So we're asking the city for two things. One, if you could come out and support, talk to some of our funders who'll be there. We invited them out to participate, and then welcome them to the city. But also, if it's possible, if we can rent, if we could borrow the stage and the bleachers again this year, like we had last year.
Because I know you used to last year.
Yes, sir.
I checked on that first thing.
Don't we have stage issues? Don't our stage have issues, is it broke?
Is it? I would have to check.
Or something, is something wrong with the stage? Yeah, there's something wrong with it. The family. Yeah, I would.
No, the previous two years, I used to come forward for my info, and this year, we had.
Flyback trailer. Just use the flyback, be ducked up.
I mean, I bring that up, I would love for you to use it, and I'd be happy to help you find one if, you know, if I can.
I would check the city for it. I mean, we may use one that was donated to us.
Yeah, that's one.
The one that was donated.
The one I need.
I can just check the city, uh, when they'd be willing to.
Well, it may still be there. Ms. Councilwoman Jackson may have been given some erroneous information. Accidentally.
Yeah, Councilwoman Benjamin. But I would check on it.
Yeah, let me insert that before my comment, yeah. That's the one I thought you were asking for, when you said they told you there were issues. I thought you were asking for the stage, because there was nothing wrong with the stage. And so maybe they, maybe they didn't know to do that. Yeah, but anyway, he's gonna tell on that for you.
Because I know we had that stage donated.
Yes, we did. It's private. Yeah, okay. Tell them you want the one that.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for representing Selma in the way that you do. You are an ambassador in the world that I know very little about. And everybody should have those rights to be represented when someone has committed a hate crime upon them. It's not my choi, your choice of living is not my choice. However, I'm gonna support you, you know I am. I will be there, I will be there shining face. My choice doesn't have to be your choice, because we all look alike at the end of the day, at the end of the day. And nobody should be treated, from what I've seen in the last year or so, in the area of LGBTQ, and I wanted to get all the alphabets in there. From what I've seen, it has been poor. I've seen young people continue to kill themselves because they've been treated in the way that they've been treated. But when you, when you come here, the first time you came, first I watched your transformation. First time you came, you looked different. And I watched your transformation, you came to us, and you said to us, this is what I'm gonna be when you see me again, and there you were. And so you have that pride about yourself. And folks need to have pride about themselves, whenever their choices have pride about themselves. But you never asked us for money. You never say, come out of your pocket. The first time you came, I thought you were about to ask us for a boatload of money. And you were like, no, we got grants, and we're setting up shop, and we got a little studio. And I was like, oh, they got everything they need. But all you asked for was a stage and some bleachers. And it was my honor to come and welcome all of those people from different places. They were, they were so glad to be in Selma, because it was their first time here. And I wish I had had more time, because I would have taken them to some of the places they said that they wanted to see. But I had to stop by and see you because of the way you present yourself when you come to this council. So I know you're the same when you're in California, wherever you live, when you're an ambassador for us. So I thank you, I appreciate it. I thank you for the establishment of representing the smart, the, maybe the world is bigger in Selma. This LGBTQ world is bigger in Selma than I know. But you have created a safe space for this group, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. I would give a few tomorrow, Mr. Bell, I follow on the stage, and also the. You want to down at the?
The Nonviolent Center, right off of Woberry.
Okay.
And I wanted to say quickly, thank you, Councilwoman Bowie and Ms. Young Love for using those gender neutral pronouns. Like, that's one of the smallest things you can do, and it just shows that we have a council that's willing to be progressive and willing to learn, even though you're coming from a different time. I appreciate that.
We learn, you know, we learn, we evolve.
It's tolerance, it's understanding that people are a people.
Right.
Accountability to each other is the most important thing, which I've said more than one time tonight.
Councilman Paul.
I'm sorry that, I would love to be here, especially with Paul involved. Yeah, they, they, they'll be. Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun. Selma hasn't had anything like this in a long time. This is, you bring, you bring, you bring in.
I got his itinerary.
Bob, you bring in, it's gonna be, you probably, a lot of people come.
We also, we're getting attention from across the state. People wanting to come, we got a ticket sales that's been going up, so we're really proud. I think, what's surprising, when you say we have a pride in Selma, you go, Selma, are you sure? I'm like, yeah.
Yeah, we got pride in Selma. That's what I'm saying, saying a lot of these markets, a lot of people, I watch the show, I like it.
Right, it's the history that we're trying to get people to come back and understand that this is the same, this city still has the same blood, still has the same passion. We're just ready to move forward. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
I don't know exactly how to ask this, but I just was wondering if y'all might think about doing something, just having, I don't know if you've called it a seminar, informational kind of thing, for people to come? I have some questions that I would like to ask, just to say, is it offensive to say, you know, there's certain things you just, we dance around because we just don't know. And I don't want to insult anybody, but then on the other hand, you know, get the griddle.
That's something that we do, our organization, we're certified to provide cultural competency training. So what we do, we work with the Alabama Department of Health, we work with Alabama Coalition Against. So what we do, we work with the Alabama Department of Health, uh, we work with Alabama Coalition Against Rave, we work with some minority mental health companies. And what we do is go in, we train the employees on how to have, uh, a culturally competent, safe, affirming space with LGBTQ and queer, um, staffing employees. So if that's something that you're interested in, I can leave my own contact information with me.
Yes, right.
Any other questions, ladies? Thank you. I can take this part.
Okay.
Not to the, to the business items, but before we get, go to the business items, uh, we have a film permit. I will put it in the mail box on tomorrow. Uh, if it's okay with the council, we can go ahead and put it on the Senate agenda. Uh, no securities involved, just the two fifty for the film permit.
So where are we, can you?
Just kidding. It's gonna be just, uh, film around the Edmonds Patterson Bridge. And I'm not gonna use in the block office, I'm not gonna do it like that.
What's the group?
Uh, it's a death of bad incorporation, uh, from Long Beach, California. And I will definitely call, uh, look like Christine on tonight to remind her of the two hundred and fifty dollars that is needed for the permit. If it's okay with us, if it's okay with everyone, we go ahead and put it on the, on the Senate agenda. Go ahead, come on.
Oh, yeah, I forgot you were missed.
Ah, I see you went out on the phone.
If I may, she tried to make payment today in the tax office and they do not accept.
They don't credit cards.
Except for taxes. So we have that issue that we need to resolve, but she has, I have proof where the check is, oh, already being overnighted. I have a tracking number, so the check will be here tomorrow.
Wow.
Okay, please.
What we'll get with Mrs. uh, Lou or something, um, uh, it's still gonna be the big rock age.
And there's a, uh, behind us, a narrative of what they're filming is gonna be about. I think it's on that last, too.
Last stage?
Yeah.
I just feel scared that you picked it up.
Mr. President, can you find out why we have a credit card machine and a debit card? Except for, this is.
Probably Texas.
Taxes, honestly.
Probably Texas.
Okay. Yeah, traveling, uh, okay. I want a tax.
That's what.
Can we please use the credit card machine?
Mr. Bell, is that what you just said?
For me?
You're informed that the credit card machine cannot be used for anything except taxes?
Yeah, that's what I was told. They cannot accept payments for the.
For anything else?
Okay, I'll look into that tomorrow. We got to get away from the bit, Rock Age.
Yeah, I mean, is Mr. Slade coming in? Is everybody boring? Yeah, like, I have a pedicure outside, I don't know what's going on.
They're overnighting your check, too.
Yes, I have the.
We got one machine that can use it.
We don't need tracking now. Making sure they still on the business, that's all. Yep, we still on the business.
About to leave the show, tell me in the car. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with the Senate agenda on this also.
I'll give it to Barney and see if he wants to go over.
How about for you?
Bring back.
Okay.
Betty, welcome.
To the business items, uh, and I have another business item I'm gonna bring up, uh, after the last, after Councilwoman Thomas' last items. Uh, now to the business items. Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President, for, um, putting this on the list here for me. Um, first I wanted to ask, has anyone received, uh, financial data for the month of March? It'll probably come tomorrow at three thirty.
He says similarly.
It came last time at three thirty, didn't it? It came at the first meeting, it was March eleventh.
Okay, then Monday at three thirty, okay. I thought you said Tuesday.
No, no, I said it came at the first meeting, um.
In the month.
In the month. We're at the second meeting in the month, um, and we're gonna be ready for May's financial documentation by the time we get March. We're gonna be ready for April, so, um, if we, if we can have that, because I would like to know what we spent in this month soon. So never, it's coming for the council. And we're ready for our October twenty fifth. Meeting minutes that everything is supposed to come for the council before end of May. Also, um, Mr. President, we spoke at our last workshop and we're not bringing up the, uh, council meeting, the fact that council members working in their council capacity cannot, can no longer receive financial documents from the, um, finance office, uh, as I stated to you, I went to.
Excuse me?
Well, let me see, there's a procedure. Um, there's an information act that, um, I think, um, seven times journal turned in back in November, December. Have you all received your information as of yet? Okay, so they have received their information and I, I asked about some information regarding Mr. Dunking being on the agenda and wanted to know what, um, was the, what were the, um, revenues and expenditures from the art camp last year? So I could speak intelligently about this subject and I was given a free form.
Information.
Information, freedom of information, that form and X to complete it. And I started completing it and I said, "When might I receive it?" And he said. And so I think we need to have something that.
With the forty hours.
Shrug. Um, I don't think, and what I've been, it's been my understanding from the league, that if we're operating in our official capacity, that we shouldn't have to go through the Freedom of Information Act. I did, I will say that Miss Edie Jones sent me an article from, I think it was Montgomery Advertiser, um, that I still have on my phone, but they're bringing legislation to the, um, state government to try to eliminate this. They're saying this happening more in, um, local, um, government, um, where we're not allowing citizens and others to re- to really look at the documentation. But I'm asking that we be allowed to receive this information, um, because I actually, um, go through it and, and, and try to come and speak intelligently about what's going on. And I can't talk about finances because I don't know and hopefully this will all be settled this week when we have someone, um, in the realm of that office at the head. But then, in the meantime, we need to make sure that whoever's at the head of that office is allowed to communicate and speak, speak with us. Um, but we need to have something in place. Um, you said forty-eight hours, you know, I, I don't disagree with that. But, um, I, I just, you know, I've never been in there, um, when the treasurer was in the office, um, being either that I've seen during this administration and not be able to retrieve information almost immediately. If they were available, if they weren't available, I'd come back and they were able to give me that information. It's like a computer book. Um, it's all supposed to be in the system. And so, um, I mean, even with the young ladies, prior to them cutting me off and giving me, asking me to fill out the form, they were able to give it to me really quickly. And then I could ask questions because giving the information is just half the battle. Then making sure that I understand the information and I can effectively articulate the information to others is the other half. And so I'm gonna ask questions if my understanding is correct. Um, and those are the things that I'm not going to be allowed to do because now I have to fill out this form and I may get it at some point. And even at forty-eight hours, that doesn't give them the freedom to say, "Yes, Councilwoman, if your understanding of this is correct." So, I mean, do we have to put something in place that they're allowed to speak?
I mean, we are, we're the fiduciary of the, of the firm, so just bring up the book tomorrow. Let's just say we, we line up and request information and get it within, uh, a time limit.
When's the time limit? I, I would like to be very specific.
A time limit.
Because the time limit to the seven time term was, you know, November and this is April and they still don't have their documentation.
When you ask for it, within the end of the day.
In the business, okay?
Pending, I mean, you know, just.
Emergency.
Emergencies.
Yeah, within twenty-four hours.
Within twenty-four hours.
I think, I think that's.
Yeah, within twenty-four hours.
Is that not something that can be placed on consent agenda? I think y'all have a brief. Okay.
All right. Text it to me.
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilwoman.
Is my turn or?
Oh, I, I thought, I thought you had the hand.
I, I did, but when you came up with the resolution to this, okay, yeah.
Text it to me, Kelly.
Okay, yeah, that's.
We'll put it on for Senate agenda. Anytime you have, Councilwoman.
No.
All right, thank you.
I'm having to not contact you to go over right now. Bring anything to you. I would like to say one more thing. Look at February, at that IT, the IT, um, information. Um, there's a lot more that has been spent in IT this year, um, actually, um, in this half year, than almost we spent all, uh, last year. And I saw that there was a hundred thousand dollar increase. I did want to ask, well, we did put that hundred thousand dollar increase. Was it for the, the, the fire department to get their new software? So why do we have an increase of almost a hundred thousand, which is a little over a hundred thousand dollars? Does anyone remember?
I think part of it was the software for the fire department, which they haven't received yet.
That was the software I asked about. I asked, remember, I asked about the million dollar software and why would we getting new software? And I requested that IT come to our meeting so that we can hear about this same stuff that we're talking about now. I remember talking with, uh, Councilwoman Thomas one day, where I do build it, and, uh, on the delivery that I saw was a, a delivery of several boxes for IT, the boxes on top of boxes and of stuff, um, and, and so maybe it's in the budget and, and, and maybe it's not. And maybe we just like to order gadgets, I don't know. But that was my reason for asking concerning this high-priced software. Uh, why are we getting more and more? Chief Stevens was here that night and he did say a little bit about, um, he was not able to communicate because he didn't have his piece of the matter. Uh, he did say that. But we did have the benefit of having the IT department here to explain the whole matter.
I did, I did have an opportunity to speak with, um, Chief Stevens and he did relay at that time, uh, what's changed because of the surprise at meeting, um, that he did not have the documentation. It just appears to me, okay, these are fifty-six numbers because I don't remember off the top of my head, but let's just deal with a hundred dollars. So if we budgeted for a hundred dollars, um, last year and we spent seventy-five dollars, but this year we put two hundred dollars in there in half the year, we spent a hundred and fifty, then I, I just want to know, why are we so popular in that department? And I, I just want to look at what we've been spending on. I, I do, I will say that I have some cameras and things go up in the downtown too. And so that could be, but, um, I would, I would like to know how, how we're spending, uh, the money.
And also we called and asked IT to help us with their credit card, uh, information, um, with the software, whatever you need to do to bring it to fruition.
And I, I recognize if we need the, um, that, because this was, uh, February twenty eighth, this was just the documentation, so, uh, February twenty eighth.
Mr. President.
Uh, sorry.
That's okay. Why we're on the subject just computers? Did we ever install all those computers and all that New World stuff that we paid over a million dollars for that we got in the bondage? Can we swap them in or something? Trade them in or lay out to the lane? I think we have.
Yeah, see, inventory reflexes.
They're not saying.
If you have inventory, stay up there.
Um, that's right, because, wait, some things take up a while.
Yeah.
All right, inventory. I just thought I'd ask. Council?
I'm just blown away. I'm just sitting there. We got, we got the Stone Age, I got rocks going down, so good.
Get Councilwoman Thomas.
Oh, Councilwoman.
They are, they are putting up cameras everywhere. They are.
Good.
They, that's probably why they spend so much. They, they are putting.
On the cameras.
They're putting up the cameras and the wifi all over, open areas.
Now, here's Big Brother's watching, I see it before.
Little brother watching.
All right, anybody else, Councilwoman?
No.
Keep out of, text it to my phone.
Steven.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Youngblood, attorney's bill.
Yes, um, Mr. President, not, not having a, a lawyer on staff, I, I'm beginning to feel a little bit, because I've had some things I wanted to talk to our, to, to our attorney about and I'm not, oh, I need to go just sit down and talk to Attorney None about it and I just can't. Cause now he's probate judge, none, and while I'm sure he cares, that's not his job anymore. Um, he's got bigger fish to fry. So, and I know that every second we talk to our law, our lawyer costs us money and I certainly can appreciate that, having been a former life that, having been an important part of my life, so having done the billing. So I, I can, I have a special appreciation for that. But I wanted to say, if I don't know, because we hadn't really discussed this, you know, there are things that, that we'll need to talk to him about that are pertinent to the city at large. And I don't know procedurally what we need to do. I think if all eight or nine of us, if all eight, eight council people went up there and talking to them all the time, that could, could become a question. But then, um, you know, sometimes we just need to, I, I, I mean, do, and then on the other, and also the other side of the coin is there's some things pertinent to war too that I need to talk to them about. And I would be willing to, you know, get that bill for my discretionary money because that's, you know, maybe part of what I need to, mostly pay for. I, I, you know, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of how to be as fluidly navigate this situation. I just don't know. We need, or I need at least some guidance. Um, I, I, I need to, I, I was hesitant to, um, mention, you know, to, to do anything, to try to go talk to them before I brought it to the council and asked about it.
Well, usually before, uh, each council meeting, uh, Attorney Jones and I would meet on Thursday, prior to the work session, any information that you, that you would like to, you know, discuss, if you would. Probably tell me during that time and I'll work and we'll discuss it. But if something in your ward, something like that, I don't, I don't see a reason why you couldn't go to them directly because, you know, it's something in your ward that may occur immediately. So I don't see a problem with it. And also it's been streamlined in the cause, uh, shots of the city, so.
Well, that's wonderful.
They've streamlined the cause, so I don't see a problem with it.
Okay. I just did not know. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilwoman Youngblood?
That's all.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, next up, Councilwoman Benjamin, Nate, all right, School of Discovery, Code Enforcement, okay, and Lead Matter, Chad on the desk. Go ahead.
Before I start that, I want to say, um, I, I, I feel the way Councilwoman Youngblood too, as well. And I've even picked up the phone and called Attorney None.
He does, huh?
And, and, and called him because I knew he would pick up the phone. And so I, I feel that way, um, I feel that way as well, even, even when we're speaking with the attorney up here. I'm always watching the clock, like, how many minutes has it been and how long has it been and counting up. So I feel that way too, Councilwoman Youngblood, and perhaps we'll bring this back up again and, uh, when other people feel that way too. Sometimes we need more numbers. Um, the School of Discovery, uh, is having a graduation, uh, convention center. Um, I'd like, I'd like for us to, um, if we could put that on consent agenda, Mr. President, that we weigh the feet for School of Discovery's, uh, graduation on May, on May, it's on a Tuesday, on May twenty-first, nine o'clock AM. For the convention center, for consent agenda if you can. Uh, okay, so Code Enforcement, I, I, I want to.
That was May twenty-first?
Uh, yes, May twenty-first at nine.
School of Discovery, okay.
The request comes from Principal Curtis, Principal Sisley Curtis.
Yeah, said enough, I think.
She knows. Yeah.
We're good to go.
When she contacted me, she, she already knew that they would not have any help with setup.
Okay.
Uh. Yeah. Uh, I want to do Code Enforcement after I do number five, Mr. President.
Okay.
Uh, update on, uh, legal matters.
Okay, I received, I mean, I put an email in to Amic Insurance Company.
Uh, the individual who I've been talking with has been out for about a week, sickness.
Uh, hopefully she will return on this week. I asked for the cop, all pending lawsuits and all, so all of the lawsuits that have been settled. So hopefully, uh, when she returns, I will give a call tomorrow to follow up with it. And she will be emailing me all of the claims, uh, against the city and also all of those that have been settled.
And did you talk with her about those two recent claims, those two recent, uh, EEOC?
I haven't had a chance yet, too.
Talk to her about those. Don't worry to talk about them.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna, and I want to know if any of those EEOC are under here.
Also, too, we have an attorney, uh, that was assigned to us, that I gave, I submitted to you at the last council meeting. I probably need to follow up with them also. Um, we have two separate attorneys that would be representing us, uh, in that endeavor. But I probably need to give them a call tomorrow. They just happened to send us a little email or something like that, uh, to follow any questions that you may have, if you would, probably have an email or two that I can forward to the respective attorneys.
Oh, I do have questions and, and I want to interview council members that have a letter, that letter that's spoken of in one of those EEOC complaint. I want to see the copy up so I can read the letter, so I can, uh, talk about it, um. You don't want to talk about that? I want, uh, I want, I want, I got a question I need to send to Mr. President to send over to the attorney that has been attached to us. And since my name is named on the letter and I've never read it before, I do want to read to see what's. Your name is on that? Your name is on that?
No, it's on the EEOC complaint. I know my name is on the letter, haven't even seen the letter, haven't even read the, but I want to now.
Counsel, Counselwoman, um, I got in my home.
You got one?
Sometime I got, uh, an anonymous letter.
I had three.
Home.
I had three.
I'd like to read that.
I got one, but I thought, I just tossed it. So I was just telling you that, yeah.
Did you keep your one?
I think I got, I was.
No, I, I, well, stuff like that, I just tossed it, I don't feel it was stuff that's anonymous.
Yeah, I, 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 I didn't want to read it at first, but now I do, you know, since I'm named in the EEOC complaint. I do want to read it now. I didn't at first, but I do now. I want to read all about it, uh, so if you would give me a copy of yours, Councilwoman.
Also too, I probably need to do at our next council meeting to coordinate a time to have both attorneys come down, we have a Q and A.
Yes.
We can take a, a faculty session, let's bring them down to see, uh, probably have some any questions that you may have. But I'll check on them tomorrow. I think our next council meeting is May fourteenth.
Bring them.
I'll see when they'll be available to come down.
Yeah, that's a long time. Lord, yeah. Ooh, that's like a vacation.
Yes, Lord. Yeah, but that's eight days before high school graduation. And so number four, Mr. President, code, okay, so code enforcement. All right, so it's two things I want to talk about because I'm code enforcement. One, I'm confused as to who is code enforcement? So if you could tell me who those employees are in code enforcement? Uh, because I called a person I thought was code enforcement and he, and he, his response to me was, I don't know where y'all keep getting that from? And I said, got it from the chief police. He announced it here at the meeting that you were code enforcement. And so he was like, oh, okay, well, maybe I need to talk about it. And so I had a real code enforcement issue. So I need to name the actual name of official people in code enforcement, Mr. President, so I have to know that I'm talking to the right city employee. I need to know who these people are. Uh, so, because I, I don't want to call the wrong person. And I, and I evidently called the wrong person, um, but I got it from an official and I thought it was correct. But, so I had an issue, um, I have about, I don't know, I have about, well, I think one was, one was cut out of Warford. But I have about seven or eight apartment complexes. And one of the apartment complexes on Warford East had an issue that we thought, um, you called me, um, Councilwoman Jackson, and gave me the number to call person. We thought it was a city issue because this person was told about the, the site manager at that place, that it was a city issue. It's going on all over the city and the city needs to fix this. So it's the weekend and we have this, we have to call the police department over the weekend to get, uh, emergencies taken care of, taking care of. This woman had, uh, raw sewage in her place. Uh, raw sewage, that was not her family's sewage as a matter of fact. Coming through her tub, coming through her sink, it had made it all the way up. I'm calling everybody, I'm calling around town, I'm calling SPD, I'm calling Mr. Hendricks, I'm calling everybody, so find out, thought. Oh, chief told us we got a new code enforcement person, so I pick up my phone, I have this person because I have that number since they were at another place. And I called this person and they were come, they were done phones like me because I thought they knew what I, thought I knew. And so finally I got Mr. Marvin on the phone to go over to the woman's house. And he determined that it was, he determined that it was not on the city's side. I said, um, so, I said, since this is a public safety hazard, is it anywhere in the books that the city can fix it and bill the manager? The property manager, give them the bill because now we got a public safety hazard. He said, I would, I would fix it, but I don't have the tubes. The tubes that I have, um, they, they could bust these people's pipes because my tubes are too big for this. It's, the tubes I have are made for city pipes. All right, so the manager over there at this place, uh, I'm calling corporate offices about this time, at this time, because this woman needs a place to stay. The manager has called and said that this is a Selma city issue. It has been for a while. Uh, uh, council members that have apartment complexes in their wards, uh, we are aware of this apparently. Um, I wasn't aware of this apparently. And that this is a city issue all across the city and it had been, said this to the corporate office and the corporate office said, then they said this, we, we believe that. And so now somebody wants to bill us for, um, this ins, for this whole incident. I have no clue who to talk to, Mr. President. I have no clue what the Department of Code Enforcement looks like. Um, I need a, but I need an official letter saying that this is not our issue, we're not paying for this issue, this is not our issue. But the manager over there is saying it is our issue, they were told it, it was our issue, and it's an issue all across the Selma land. And so can you get me, I don't even know where to go.
Uh, definitely. Uh, we may be down to one EEOC claim.
Is it a point that should even see the line back?
I think.
I had my hopes up, I really wanted to go to court.
Make sure.
Okay, Councilwoman, uh, pass it down.
Uh, I had.
I just opened it up, uh, Councilwoman.
I just want to see what you want to look.
Uh.
Oh.
Oh, really?
Councilwoman.
Yes, uh, me and her are about the same, we had the same problem with raw sewage. I'm dealing with Bush, Bush Cook. Uh, Bush Cook is, uh, I had same area we have in our community where the raw sewage is coming, is coming from apartment complex. Marvin came out, we did the same thing.
Oh, we did?
Uh, it was, but I was right before you.
Okay.
And, uh, it's not the city problem, it's the pocket contract. And, uh, we, we waited on this man to come, Bush Cook. So my next step is to, I did research when, when it, when this, if the, uh, it's not the city and, um, we waited on him, he never came, he still hasn't come. So what my next step is go to the health department. Because that is, and that is out in the open of public where people live and, uh, it, it's his line, Marvin and, and we went through all the red tape. So I was trying to give him a little, little, little time. But, uh, my next step is to go to the health department because it's unhealthy when the community is, is taking in raw sewage coming up out of this.
That's indeed what the citizen wanted. The citizen wanted to go to, uh, the chief health inspector.
Yes.
All this and, and, which is why, when it comes to our attention as government, then we have to do something about it. Because we can't have the health inspector coming in and say, saying that, uh, you knew about it, but you didn't do anything about it. So I called every, every single number that I knew to call, I called, um, people that are supposed to be in charge of this thing. Um, so if you would help me, uh, finish this and I told the, uh, the corporate, uh, person for this site, um, that I would be giving her, getting her letter. That is, it is not on our end. It's, you know, when you call the health inspector, make sure that they know it's not the city itself, it's a problem.
Can you give me that, that email, that address?
But I, uh, the, the person is playing the role of, of code enforcement, is, is bad guy. He is, is the acting code enforcement.
Huh?
Yes. He is, he is the acting code enforcement because I have another incident.
Wait a minute.
In my board and he came out and, uh, I had to pull the code up, get the code up on the information with a person that came into my room.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I thought it had to be an ACO certified officer, which was, uh.
He has a badge.
Who?
Oh, he does.
Hey, don't get out like that, I mean, come on.
He wears a badge.
Oh, I, I'm gonna make a statement about that tomorrow.
He wears a badge because he pulls his badge up when he comes out.
No, I'm just saying, how do I do having a lot of calls as.
He wears a badge.
Agent, uh, going around.
What is this man's job title?
Which one? Do we have, I thought we hired.
He wears a badge and, and we had this thing with, 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 with one of the kids. And he told the citizen, he didn't know the code, so I went and dug the code up, but what the problem was about. And he told him.
That is recreation.
And he said he got, he got, he got his from the chief police, uh, swore him in.
That was.
He said, I asked him, I said.
I would address that.
He said, chief police swore him in and he said, I said, well, why you pull your badge? He said, because I'm, I'm volunteering, he said, I'm volunteering. I said, you getting paid? He said, no, he said, uh.
Well, I guess to my benefit now, if I thought of someone who could monetize it, it's a sheriff, the highest office in the county.
Well, he's been sworn, he says that the chief won't be.
Well, I will, I will follow up on tomorrow, uh, with some information to see, uh, okay. Okay, Councilwoman.
This is why I don't know who to talk to, Ms. President. This is why I don't know who to talk to.
We'll find out tomorrow.
Okay.
So do we hire the former sheriff's deputy to be a code enforcement officer? That's not.
Because I thought the big problem was he had to be ACO certified.
Last time I thought we could use those citations and all this stuff.
You have to, you have to tell him that he's hired.
Great most certification.
But Mr. Mike said now, he, he ain't.
You got to tell him he's hired.
Chief told us he had hired Mike, Mike up.
We'll find, we'll find out.
That was wrong with mine, you know, I, I wasn't here with the, I remember earlier in that meeting when I, when, I guess when the chief stated it. But if you recall the meeting before, the mayor stated when Councilwoman Thomas tried to ask, um, did we have someone in code enforcement? He said, we have someone, we've hired someone at the police department.
Yeah, we might.
But she said, do we have a code enforcement guy? He said, we hired someone at the police department.
Mike, Michael.
So.
When they got to tell him? The chief told us. Yes.
Police. Not aware he was hired from that position.
Okay, Councilwoman Benjamin, go ahead.
Oh, I got some more?
Yes.
Oh, just, okay, so announcement. I, I, number six and number seven, Mr. President, you do announcements on Tuesday now, so I do that as an announcement on Tuesday. And then, oh, just, oh, this one, okay. Uh, and number eight, um, I need to know what to tell these kids and the principals and all that about the summer youth program, uh, whether we are or we are not doing it. We need to go ahead and let them know because they expect applications in these, inside schools. And so we need to just let them know with, um, you know, how they call council members and say, well, the application's coming out. So we just need to tell them yes or no.
Okay.
Does that, else, Councilwoman?
Mr. President, it's, you know, I think that's important that we find out definitely whether the city's going to be able to operate a summer youth program uh, at this juncture, and I just don't see how it came.
We just need that.
But that's what I've come from the executive office to give us guidance as to which direction to go.
Councilwoman, in the past.
And we need to find it out like quick, fast.
Yeah, like tomorrow, because I know in the past, I know we, uh, contacted the school board along with the Selma houses authority. Uh, they handed out some funds for the, for some.
They give ten or twenty thousand a piece of.
Yeah, so they give to help with the summer youth program, but I think we need to find out, I do compare with you, uh, find out tomorrow.
Yeah, so we're just.
How do you want to bring some children to work?
Yeah.
How do you want to bring some children to work in the work of name?
No, 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 I'm just.
No, that's not my, my question.
We just want to say.
We need to tell them yes or no.
Officially, you know, we will be moved forward to some.
Yeah, we need to let them know, schools always have.
I would definitely know tomorrow, I, I'll email tomorrow to find out and I will let you all know. All right, uh, to my two bases, uh, the census twenty twenty is coming up and it's very important that we get an accurate head count. I think it's important that I believe in Attorney None and also the mayor. And I think we need to have a citywide and all the matters and order and also better grant to encourage, uh, as many people as possible to fill out the census. That can have a direct impact of the federal laws. I know last year, I mean, last time we had a census count, uh, it was twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty-six, uh, people here in Selma. And I know it's going to drastically probably drop off. And each individual that fills out the census, the dollar amount I was reading up is one thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. But each individual who fills out the census, uh, the individual who will not fill out is still the same, it's also one thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. But we need to maximize as many people as possible to, uh, fill out the census because if not, it's going to have an adverse effect on federal laws. And I think it's given with, you know, program, judge, none, and also the mayor to see can we have the city, uh, town meeting to have, uh, Mr. Scott to come in, who's over the census, to come in and talk with the, um, constituents and have coordination for, uh, them to fill out the census and also talk about job opportunities that you can be employed with the census twenty twenty. Um, it's very important, I can emphasize it enough, that we take a proactive, active, um, movement in, uh, making sure we have an accurate head count. I got that, just Councilwoman, Councilwoman, be sure.
Where will it start, Mr. President, and where will it end? Because as you very well know, every ten years when the census has been completed, every city has, has to shift, uh, their war lines to ensure, uh, one man, one vote consent with the equalization in, in war. So it's going to be important for us to know where will it start and where will it end.
Okay, he would definitely, uh, I have a meeting with, uh, Scott on tomorrow, I will ask him that question also. And that's the whole gist too, of having him to come in and talk, uh, with what don't affect the community, have questions like that. And for him to give, uh, all the just, uh, information that they need, far as like, that's a perfect question that you just asked about Mary's thought.
Also, Mr. President, when, when, you know, when it's completed and, and let's say the war lines, uh, shift.
Yes, sir.
I would, uh, insist that the proper designation for, uh, the war lines be noted at the, uh, voter registration office.
Yes, sir.
Because for too long, those areas that were supposed to be in six were still being carried in four and five. And it brought about a, a, a change in outcome of an election. It was only after the war, uh, it was determined that the, uh, session that was in four and the session that was in five was no longer in those respective wars, that they were relegated back to war six. And I guarantee you it brought about an outcome that was different than the last two races.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Councilwoman Ben, I would definitely, uh, make sure we, we, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, this is, um, very, very important and, and in so many ways I can't stress it enough. Um, I was part of the presentation, um, in California, which is one of the other reasons I had to make sure I was there. Y'all remember when I went to California? Um, I was part of the presentation, uh, for census twenty twenty and, um, I, and Mr. President, when you had read it and Will knows, William Scott knows this as well, that, um, the, the part of our network that I can bring down is from the national office. They are so anxious to get to Selma because our numbers were so underrepresented because we know that when, Selmas, when we stay with each other, we don't count everybody. Because we not take, uh, who all are in, who's in the house. And so our numbers are very underrepresented and we can't compete in certain areas because we don't have the correct, we have numbers, but not the correct numbers. So we can't compete in, uh, for some things that Selma should have, some resources that Selma should actually have. The process, uh, and we're behind again, Mr., um, the show, Councilwoman Shaw, the process, the process itself should be started now. There should be, there should be some, um, things going on within our churches, within our organizations, within, there should be smaller meetings going on now. Getting people ready, uh, the education process, it should be going on right now. The application process is, is started a while ago. I know that the application process started when people can make money. But I'm talking about the process that I think you're talking about, the process of getting these numbers correct and getting these lines correct. Uh, we should already be in the ballgame from this. So I'm glad that William Scott's coming, um, to talk about that because again, like the last time, we were kind of behind, behind the ball in this whole thing. And our numbers were not correct. In the census twenty ten, our numbers were not correct. It's going to take all of us to get those numbers correct and it's going to take us to convince people, this is, this is now, this is all I want from you. Is I need a count, I need a correct count.
And also too, we're going to involve, you know, the pastors and, you know, encourage them.
They have to.
Uh, encourage them to attend the meeting, um, as soon as I go to finalize it with, you know, permisses and the mayor and the board, uh, that, and also give the mayor downstairs to see, can we go ahead and, uh, move forward with this? I say, I guess we may need a marketing tool or whatever, whatever it takes to get the accurate numbers. Because like I said, um, if it's a derelict, it's going to have an adverse effect on the fund, federal fund that we receive within the city.
Well, it's a good ground, it's a good foundation already, so you don't have to reinvent anything, it's a good foundation.
And, and another way they are doing too, you know, like in the community, like in our community, we have like people at church, when they have service on, on Sunday, they'll have people to talk to the people too about, uh, about how important it is for them to fill out their, their census, uh, too. And also another problem too she had, you know, we got these houses in our ward that are boded up and, um, some of them, that, some of these houses are boded, they wanna know, you know how you have your relative owns a lot of property in, in some of our areas? And they bode them up, and they wanna know, is they for rent, uh, uh, they condemned? Um, I had a lady out in my ward that been doing census, and she would get to the homes, and she would call me, she asked me, she says, "Councilwoman, can you tell me, um, is anybody, who's the owner of those houses?" I said, "Well, Clyde owns all of those houses, but he does rent them out." See, that's the problem too, cause they, you got, in some areas in wards, you got a lot of houses that are boded up.
They gotta record it, they have to, they have to record it.
Yeah, and they have to see to find out who's the relative, is these houses for rent, you know, they have to.
Hopefully, yes, all of them are.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that to, uh, the council attention. Uh, next this morning, this club home's request, uh, like each year, we know it's getting hot, and the clubs are, um, in operation now. And each year, we have a fire chief along with the police chief to meet with the club home, and have each club to submit the bit, um, the security plan to the city itself, where, um, the chief of police will review the security plan, and if it's in admitted, uh, additional information that he would need to, uh, include in, in the, um, security plan, uh, he definitely will. Uh, but the meeting will be coming up probably first in May, first, first we get May, once I coordinate the time with the chief of police, and also with the fire chief. Uh, this year also, we're gonna add, uh, ABC board, uh, it's gonna be called, uh, the meeting, so. Uh, once I go and coordinate, um, the ABC, uh, the time that they come out for the meeting. Um, this is an opportunity where the club home has an opportunity to engage with, uh, local law enforcement. And also about three or four years ago, um, for, for accordance for each club, uh, they have to have, they have to have, uh, security cameras, uh, in that establishment, so we need to make sure that the security cameras are still in action, um, while, um, while they're open. But I will be giving you further details far as with the upcoming meeting with the club home. This is something we've been doing for the last eight to nine years, uh, but like I said, it's getting hot now, and I think it's important that we need to do it. All right, next we have, next three hours, we have Councilwoman Thomas, cemetery ordinance, water board agreement, and outsourcing project on Thursday.
Well, first I want to talk about the cemetery, the councils are getting the heat about the cemetery. Uh, we got Lourenzo Harrison, and we have, uh, the cemetery out here. The grass is overgrown, we have a lot of debris in there, we got, they get the dump garbage in the cemetery. A lot of us have loved ones out there that we go out there to the cemetery, but right now, we need to try to figure out, uh, uh, a way that we can get this cemetery, you know, cleaned up, because, I mean, the grass is hot. We've seen snakes, uh, you know, they're crawling on over the graves and stuff. So we need to try to work, work something out right away to get that.
I have someone come out here, uh, to look at two of the cemeteries.
You have?
Who clean up cemeteries, um, I told him not to go just with the price, but, uh, he would definitely give me what we just wait to see if he can go out there and cut the grass and scrub it. So, uh, I will bring that back to you now.
And also, I want to, uh, bring this to everybody's attention.
Councilwoman, you want to do your next segment?
No, no, this still at the cemetery.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the ordinance, do everyone know, uh, we had an ordinance, uh, been the city, city of Alabama have a code ordinance about how we can bury people, when, um, and, uh, we had a meeting. President Boo, what day that was?
It was about two weeks ago.
Uh, we had a meeting, the funeral home, uh, directors, the, on the funeral home came out. And, uh, at the time, this, this, the council did not know, not even, we did not even know, even President Boo didn't know, that, uh, the department head had went out to, to the funeral home director, and was, had gave them days, what days they can bury, uh, people. Yes, what day you can bury your loved one, and, and they were, you know, they were, they wanted to let us know that there was an ordinance.
And that was an ordinance, uh, for, 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 they're in a mail purpose back in two thousand and three. Uh, I think it's in seven o'clock to three o'clock, uh, every day. Uh, but in this case, we have two, two avenues that we can take. Number one, either we can amend the ordinance to reflect the letter that was sent out, or we can just state and enforce, you know, that, uh, we allow one to bury it here today. Like, cause ordinance is a law.
Yes.
So, I think we have to revert back to, um, bury it here today, uh, holding our own ordinance. Either that, or number two, like I said before, either we have to amend that ordinance to reflect the letter that was passed on now.
Yeah, the letter.
Yeah.
Cause the year has already went out too, uh, and then, uh, you know, we have funerals, you know, sometimes people have to come a long way from home. And, uh, you, when you go to, uh, tell a, uh, family member what day you can bury your loved ones, you know, and then the city already, the funeral home already know that the city of Selma has a code ordinance, and it tells you everything. But, uh, I think we need to be very careful at this, uh, with this ordinance.
And also, it was very engaging and informative meeting with the funeral directors, and they also, um, shared some light on some new revenue streams in the cemetery, but I think it's important that we go ahead and start cleaning up the cemetery because of that, before we move forward with the, with the increase.
And we need to really address this here, because, uh, when we, that's why I tell when we have city ordinance, then we have to be, uh, you know, we supposed to work together, you know, when you go out and do this here, you don't know what comes behind this, so we need to look at this.
Yeah, I, I think that was important thing, mail purpose back in two thousand and three. Councilman.
Thank you, President, I appreciate it, and I agree, uh, uh, Lourenzo Harrison Cemetery, uh, it is getting a lot of, you know, many calls behind that, I did give a call to the mayor, and, um, and I understand that we just only have two workers right now. And that was my point, I'm getting to this, um, we might have to amend this ordinance, uh, this code that Mr. Thomas talked about, because right now, I think that was changed because of our workers, of, like, it's, you think there's a layoff and everything, that we, so we may have to amend it for temporary, but I'm not sure how we need to do it, but, uh, right now, a lot of our problem that go on that, also our layoffs with the employees, you know, so, uh, what are we need to do to make it better for the loved ones, I'm willing to do it, but I'm thinking that basically what it is, reason why this, the change would be going on because of the employees.
Mr. President, I think, uh, Councilwoman Beal, I think, Councilwoman Beal, you have, you have a call.
Cause I gotta, oh, I'm trying to get my stuff.
Go, go, go.
I gotta go to.
I have a question for you.
Okay, yeah, I got, I got, okay.
All right, yeah, you have to speak.
Go, go ahead.
Mommy, you don't need to. Oh, okay, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, uh, there has been an organized, there is an organized date that citizens have organized to clean up, uh, the cemetery, uh, Lourenzo Harrison, is, I want to say it's May third, I could be mistaken, uh, without getting our text. Third? I think they're trying to do it the week before Mother's Day.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, cause we always go out there and clean up, um, the Saturday before Mother's, my mother is out there, um, for the, there's a community, uh, effort that's, people gonna bring their resources and their lawn mowers and stuff like, and I'm almost, I'm almost thinking they included live opening. I went to this.
Well, I, I asked, well, I was asking.
Yeah, just, just Lourenzo Harrison.
Well, I was, I was asking, I was gonna ask, and I'm quite sure a lot of people will pull together because of, uh, to work in both cemeteries, because it, we have got, I'm serious, the grasses, it is.
I know that they were talking on the thread, and, and, um, I, they were talking, I know that some people were saying, yeah, a lot of offices is, is in disarray also, but I didn't, I, I don't remember this volunteering, uh, but, um.
But we was gonna ask anyway.
But it's like a community effort already organized for Lourenzo Harrison, uh, uh, in, I want to say it's May third or May fourth, somewhere up in there, May third or May fourth, it is a big community effort, and a lot of people spoke about their parents, and siblings are out there, and they don't like, because we should really send. Uh, it was led by Joyce, being of, uh, one of the social safety clubs, people coming, if you know her, uh, getting in contact with her. You said, also, there's a letter.
Yes.
You said there's a letter that was circulated that changed our operations?
Yes, and that's why, that's why the.
What, what's, who's the letter from?
It, it came from the, the director of the cemetery.
Mr. Patway.
Mr. Patway, he went out to the funeral homes and served us, gave the, the funeral home directors the letter.
So women have gave a directive to break our own ordinance?
The mayor sent him, he went out, he's, he's a day-to-day operator.
He is, yeah.
He sent him out with the letter to the funeral.
Well.
We, we gave a directive to break our own one. Um, that's, that, I understand manpower, but when we get up here and say we have a law against this, and then let's not break it, all you gotta do is come stand at the podium and say it needs to be changed.
I thought we were gonna mend that.
Yes, I, that's, but, yeah, we're gonna amend it, but the letter was already sent out. The letter was already out. To these directors, I understand, from my understanding, from these two, that there was a meeting with directors, because somebody went and confronted these people and said, you can't bury these people's loved ones, what if they had some people on the book already?
And they was very grateful that.
And then I'm, I'm booked, I'm booked for Saturday, and you tell me I gotta bury on Tuesday?
And they made a statement too that makes sense, cause a lot of times the city, the cemetery, uh, they, they don't dig the, 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 the graves in the, in the, uh, uh, for the bodies. These, these funeral homes have people doing that, so that's, that's why I said that that was, that was kinda odd for a person to go out, because most families, uh, either they get their own people to dig their own, you know, their graves.
Councilwoman, in, in closing, my remark, what I want to say, as you, as you go on, and you talk about this in, inside of your, inside of your committee, which I'm a committee member, uh, let's, let's consider that, um, these are sacred territories that we're talking about.
Yes.
Uh, certain people have to be buried in a certain amount of time, uh, and you have mentioned time, certain people have to be buried in a certain amount of time for different reasons, and also, uh, uh, in other cultures, people take their time, and it's usually on certain days of the week, uh, it's usually on the weekend, and then folks have to make a rent from the jobs and get places, so this is sacred, uh, I think we need to be very careful, and this needs to be well thought out.
Yes.
As we talk about.
And I would suggest also, prior to talking on to Councilwoman Jackson, that when you have your committee meeting, that's gonna be a committee, I would suggest that you bring some funeral directors also.
Yes, I would like to have them, because they were real nice, and they were talking about, you know, how, they were sympathizing with the family, because they were saying like, hold that family stay so far, you know, people have to take off their job, and you gotta tell your loved one when you can bury them, so. I understand where they're coming from, and I understand what the, what this ordinance, that's why I said we, we have to be very careful, we have to see what we have in place when we go out and do these things.
Yeah.
Cause you, you know, you gotta have ordinance or something in place. My next one.
Hello, Councilwoman Jackson?
And I don't wanna, as my mom used to say, cut your nose and spite your face, um, but this went out in, in March, it's now April. I'm nearly made, and we're discussing this, um, because we have to start it all, um, to inform department heads, administrative officers, and others, that the proper procedure for changing an ordinance is to come with the council, not enact a new directive that's carried out that alters what is already on the books. And I, I, I think because what we're going to have is, we amended this time, and then we're still short, cause we don't have any, and they take three more that night. And we amended again, because we hadn't said, this is the proper, and if you should do it again, we're not going to amend. Um, we're going to ensure that the workers work those hours, and ensure that they cover those things, and if not, we assure that we have someone to do that. And so I think the proper thing is that we need to make sure that department heads and executive officers understand, um, that this is our life. That this is our life, and that we, we need to travel through it gracefully.
But I can tell you one thing, the funeral directors were very happy to meet with the council members, because they said, my mom was standing there, they're trying to get a meeting.
And they couldn't get it.
That they couldn't get.
Yes, they.
For some reason or not, I don't know, but, uh, they was happy that they had a, we had opportunity to talk.
But thank you guys for being so conscientious, and holding that meeting, and ensuring that the council is represented in a way that, um, is procedurally correct, seeing as though I wasn't, as of March twelfth, made aware of this, and I'm not sure of any other, other council.
Well, we didn't know, we didn't know.
Right.
We didn't even know this had happened to the funeral home.
And therefore, this is the way that things should go, um, as I stated, I don't think, you know, we should spite our nose, um, um, because this is something that has been particularly defined, Councilwoman Johnson, is due to the layoffs, so it may, in fact, it's something that we need, but, um, we can't continue to cut back, cut back, cut back, and never talk to the, the people, people that actually set the ordinance in place. If that's the case, if we do it this time, just a little by July, it's going to be enough.
Councilwoman Beal, then we'll go back to Councilwoman Thomas.
This president, since grass was mentioned in my colleague's presentation, you know, grass is a problem, this president, Selma's becoming a jungle. We're not looking at, we're not a sharp office, it's being overtaken by grass, and, uh, we got to, we got to, you know, the city ediments. You know, I'm, I'm not talking about people personally, I'm talking, I'm talking about.
City.
The city right of ways has become a problem. When you come to a four-way stop, you can hardly see a car coming, uh, from the other way because of the grass. We got to find a way to get this grass cut, and I was hoping great that at the next meeting, we will have a solution. I don't know when that's gonna be, uh, because I, I, you know, I asked, uh, Mr. Man, he said that, uh, we don't have nobody to cut the grass.
Let's say, I mean, say okay.
If they would let me use one of the turnbikes, I'd say I'd cut the grass, you know, because this grass is, 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 I'm serious, this grass is a problem. It's, it's, and we got to fix this. Of course, the many other problems.
Just give me more credit, Councilman.
Mr. President, my people trying to get into this meeting, it's the same, the door should not be locked.
Oh, I forgot, council.
She gonna let me.
Um.
Door should not be locked.
Miss Harrison had, had to leave at six thirty, and it was asked that we go down the side door, uh, to get out.
So citizens can come to the public meeting?
Yeah, I guess, uh, I can see how.
They locked out?
Yeah, at six thirty, so.
Okay.
Uh, Councilwoman.
Okay, we have one more, I have, this is, I, you know, I brought this up before, we have a memorandum where the city and the water work made agreement, this was done in two thousand and five, that, uh, you know, if the water work comes out and do repair on the, on the street, that the city would go back and paint, would fix it. None of this had been done in a long time, because, you know, this is a problem too in our city, uh, where.
Bless you.
The, the brand-new pot truck is not working, nobody's going back and fixing what the water, uh, once they repaired. Nobody goes back and pays it. We have a serious problem within some areas, I know I do in my ward, where the water, where Selma Water Works has come from the time that I've been in here, sit here, has not, the city has not fixed, and it's making, it's where people driving their vehicle, this is the problem, people driving their vehicle, and they're falling in these holes, because you gotta constantly, we don't have nobody to bring to crush and run back out, to fill it back up, and we don't have nobody to pay. So this, this memorandum that I read, I would like to, to, I would like for, for the council to, I would like to, can we do a, can we do an, uh, like an ordinance, uh, can we do a resolution where that since this city is in this, uh, situation, that, you know, the water work, they got good, they got money, where when they come out and do the work, they hire somebody to come back and, and pay, where they, where, once they finish the project, because it's got to be fixed.
Correct.
It, I'm telling y'all, it is so much, uh, uh, repairing that the Selma water work has done, that the city has not came back and paid it, so as of now, I would like to ask, can we do an ordinance?
A resolution, I'm like.
Yeah, a resolution that we.
We have to do a, talk with, uh, the chairman, the long, the chairman of the water board, before we do a resolution.
The chairman.
Robert Allen, Robert Allen.
Robert.
Let's think, you know, let's get some sense between both parties, because I think that was doing the personal.
Yes, it was done, this was done in.
Oh, five?
Two thousand and five.
Okay.
And, uh, it was, uh, at that time, it was signed by. Perkich was the, uh, the mayor. Uh, Loretta Weep, she was the city clerk. Mr. LaShaw, you was the vice chair.
Yes.
And Benny Booth was the secretary, uh, treasurer.
All right. Council, Councilwoman.
I would recommend, I would recommend, Mr. President, just, just a recommendation, that, uh, councilperson, uh, go to the water board and get on the agenda to remind them of this agreement and to let them know that they're falling short in their agreement.
Okay.
I, I think that the first thing we need to do this whole record, that this is a problem, we'll bring it to your attention, hopefully they will begin to address it.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Jackson?
Okay, wait a minute, I wanna make sure I understand this correctly, because I didn't think she said that the waterworks were falling short in their agreement.
The city.
The city's falling.
The city's falling short in their part, it's, it's on the city.
The pavement.
The pavement, but we wanna change it because it was agreement at the time, back then.
So she, what she's asking is that the, when they, the city, Selma Water Works, when they actually come out and fix the area, uh, underneath the street, the pavement, that they hire someone to come in.
And pay.
And repay.
And repay it.
So she was asking that instead of us having a partnership, where they fix, we pay, they fix and pay.
Can I press it?
Right. Councilwoman, Councilwoman.
I, I think the reason we came up with that agreement was because, uh, the waterworks not charging the city any water.
Give it to get all sewer.
Yeah.
What's the way to give them?
Or to get all sewers?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I know, they get all the sewer money, we fix the sewers, but they get the money. So how much we gotta give to get free water? I would rather pay for my own water.
Okay.
To be responsible for water.
We really need to change this, because let me tell you something, y'all, every, over there in Hill Area, you got the waterwork over there now, on, uh, that is about freedom about the church. They doing, you see what they digging up? You see how big that is? And it, 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 the city is not going to, we got nobody to go back there and, and fix that?
But the contract should be, let's contract out.
That's government, brother.
Right.
But that's, that's not the water, that's a.
That's a cage, stone, right?
You gotta see the waterwork over there.
Yeah, that, you know, they, moms, because they got some pipes and all that.
Let's contract out.
Okay, well then, my next question.
I think, I think you need, like you say, either get on board or tell, or you talk with the.
I think yes, yes, I am wrong, Adam.
Yeah. She's, she's not wrong with this, because I had.
I guess.
Yeah, I guess, that's a good way.
I had a couple of areas, um, where the waterworks did come out, um, and, but no one from the city.
The city ain't fixing that.
To fix the street.
Street's staying up.
You know, when I first got in and I called them, and they said, well, we didn't even know that the waterworks were out there fixing the streets, and if we don't know, then how do we know to come back? But of course, we had more members at that time, but that was the, the reason that they weren't, um, following through at that time, but this.
That's a good idea, Councilwoman.
Yes.
That's a good idea, thank you for bringing that, thank you for bringing that forward.
And my last one is dealing with Ray Hall. Ray Hall, the city has given Ray Hall too much money. Too much money in this town, and you got a month, you been begging him, he lease contracts out to, he serves the work out to the contractors. But the contractor will not come back and fix what they tear up. Listen. Well, I understand what I'm talking about.
Oh, no, she talking, she talking about something else.
And you heard what you heard.
Okay, okay, I understand, because I do the research. Uh, Ray, Ray Hall gets all his money, we be, we give him all these bids, he gets, uh, he serves his work out to subcontractors. Okay, on the corner First Avenue and on Church, now I've been begging, y'all heard me, been talking to him, I've been begging, he been calling this man. Now, I'm asking, tomorrow, we vote that Ray Hall pay a contractor to come and pay First Avenue and, and Church, where it's bad. That con, that subcontractor, he been calling this man in another state, this man would not come back, and he got, he got our area tore up. And, and, and he's just been putting pressure on and been calling, I've been begging them for a whole month. This man, he, he gets all these contracts, he subbing to other people, and they tap our neighbors and they don't come back and pay. He won't pay them, so I need to get that done, that's bad.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Uh, Councilwoman, I would just ask, uh, and this is your area, I've, though I've driven through it and I almost, um, lost time, um, because it is extremely bad, but what I was calling and saying was that he's spoken to it and because of the weather that's been here, um, the amount of rain, that they didn't have enough dry days to, to come in and get it done. Now, that's what I, I thought I heard, understood.
Yeah, he said, but we, we had some dry days.
We've had, we've had a whole lot of rain and so.
But when he, but when it rained, guess what? The hole get bigger, but he don't come back and put no more.
Pressure on.
Pressure on in there.
And so, so what I would like to see before we, we go ahead and do that, because I thought he said he would cut out some pay or wouldn't do something, he said he would do something if he did.
As a mechanism.
As, as a mechanism that he had.
Well, how many more cars are falling there when we have a whole lot of shoes?
I, I was gonna say, Mr. President, uh, before we paint Mr. Hall with a bronze brush, let's see if he'll come and share with us, update, and then we can let him move about some hour or so.
That's a valid concern, because it's a, it's a large area.
And I've been asking for the, uh, month. No, no, but, but this a major street that go up and down, up and down.
This is something they did work on.
Yeah, I know, I'm like, imagine there, this all over, come aboard, they didn't get work on.
I, I would ask you to, to come tomorrow, I ask you come tomorrow.
And we need to make sure that it's a part of the grants or the bidding process that he's putting in, that they're actually tearing up the roads, and make sure that there's not an understanding. Like the waterworks, that I tear up the road and fix it, and then the city has to come back out, make sure that's not.
He has, that's in place, that's in place, that's. Mr. Hogs has that in place. That the city was. Uh-uh, no, that he goes, he goes back and he's, is in place, is what I'm saying. And checks off, before he brings it back to, he checks off everything that they're supposed to have done, because he has to. He's the only engineer we have in this area that does what he does, he has to do that, he has to.
And he sucks a lot.
And, 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 uh, same issue that my colleague, and I've rested Mr. Hogs, and the contractor came back in and did it, that maybe some rams and reasons why they're not being completed.
I would, I would. There's that Mr. Hogs, he listen up.
I haven't, I haven't come tomorrow, I called.
They don't deserve that.
Also too, I received, uh, an inquiry from, from the, uh, from the EBITDA missions, which I have no dog in the fight, I would not go on and forest with the, uh, the building permit for the new. Use, uh, uh, it's asking, can we look at, you know, uh, working with them on the building permit, because I know each year they give forty-five thousand dollars towards that endeavor, and I would let you know how much is the permit.
And it came to the rise of our employees when they were short on paying bills and things like that recently?
Yeah.
I mean, anything we need to consider for them, I think it would be very easy to consider. Without them, we have a much different community.
Yeah.
Okay, what I would do is I would, somebody bring a recommendation, because Councilman Short and I.
I, I will, I mean, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I would too.
It's a conflict, we all, we all are Catholic?
Yeah, Catholic.
Yeah, we're both, yeah, we're still both.
I'm a Catholic, I'm a, we're brothers, we have to say the Hail Mary. There'd be a conflict in two, so.
And you, and I'm not, I'm too old to go to jail.
Is there a lot of people go to jail for you?
They're going to your end.
My last, my last point is very important, this is very important, because this dealing with us on public safety. Our schools, uh, well, the school in my ward, this is very important, uh.
Knox.
Knox School has been a target, uh, burglarized. Just last week, they broke in, and, uh, I have the detailed report of a call where the alarm was going off. This, if this victim stayed in there three hours, I went and watched. Uh, the suspect stayed in there three hours inside of Knox. Three hours while the alarm was going off, we have, this is the detail. The, he was in the building three hours getting everything and peeping at the one, the alarm still was going off, you could see him on the, on the, the counter, we watched. He went in there at ten, I think, ten thirty-five, eleven thirty, and he didn't come out till three o'clock. When he came out, he came out with a sheet with all the laptops, belongs to the children. That they got to be tested, these kids have to have tests next month. He came out, he got fabulés, hand washed, toilet paper, he just got a lot of stuff. And he wasn't from here, so he had, that they got, they got him at Bosco. He was at Bosco, he had went somewhere and with a, a debit card at the bank, tried to do something, and he, the, the, the receipt fell out his pocket, some kind of way in Bosco, and, uh, I mean, and, uh, he was, he hadn't been here for three weeks in our town, he from some part of Gallow, Galloway, Alabama.
Galloway?
Yeah, he had just got out of prison, and he was homeless, and he said he had been staying in my ward for three weeks, in abandoned house, and, uh, he told him that he was on drugs and everything, but that wasn't good enough. He got rid of all of the, the, the computers, he got rid of all these kids' computers which they needed, and we could not believe, me and Mrs. Brown waiting to see Chief Coe, three whole hours, police didn't come, three, four hours. He walked out the door, he walked out of the building with a big old, you could see the, the sheet with everything, even he had took the big old, uh, flash screen TV off the wall, he was gonna come back and get it, but he didn't come back, but they got it. And the judge, I wish I had been, I would tell the judge, put him on more than a fifty-dollar, dollar gun, he need to be on a million-dollar gun, because it affected these kids, they can't do their tests.
Councilwoman, thank you.
Uh, I, the, um, the principal walked into me at, uh, my son's track meet, and she sat next to me and she, um, she told me all about it, I like, like the hours that it took for, uh, when, from the time that the alarm went off to the time that, um, the police arrived, there were hours in between, and said, she told me that he was able to take his time and choose what he wanted to get, it was just that much time and that much lack, lapse in it. I think she told me that there were fifteen computers taken from the entire.
Yes.
That the level of computers are gone, and what I think you're about to ask us is to, we put an all call out to kinda help.
The school.
All call out to organizations, churches and whatever, uh, the, the, the kids now are tested, like on computers, like national.
How many, how many, how many computers?
They took nine, they took nine, uh, there, and they took the other.
Laptops.
They, they, they're all on laptops, but they're different brands.
Let me, let me see tomorrow, see do we have a surplus at the college, maybe.
Yes, but you know what? The test is coming up, if we can, if the public, just like that thing went out there, and he on drugs and he sold those, those, those.
I understand.
And we're asking, if, 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 if they could just, these are kids that Knox, when you on the street of Knox, on the street, these kids need this, to do their testing.
And then it may not be enough time to turn around with the sheriff, like.
Yeah.
Because I think the tests are, I mean, tomorrow, please.
Okay.
Uh, and guess what?
They were actually, they were actually testing.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm not being.
But, but Sam, before you say this, they broke in the school again, I got a call Friday, she called me today to come back and look at the tape. Uh, he came back, another one came back, with a pipe, he broke the, the guy in the council office out, he's up in the, in the school, then how many more in the school can take? He, they taking all the children's stuff? It, yeah.
They need to find that alarm system, folks, and, uh, give us some, somebody.
And the alarm was going off.
Because it, it.
That's a reaction.
That's a reaction.
That's a reaction time, man.
I didn't do that.
And he left a pipe.
I guarantee, I guarantee, the alarm, before they ever called, uh.
Oh, it's in here, yes, it is.
What time it, what time it?
All over here, it, 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 it's in here, the alarm stayed on three hours going off.
What I'm saying.
And the one Friday night he broke in, and the alarm was going off, and they called, they, the secretary came over to the school, and the officer came out, he didn't get the pipe for evidence, the seats for Frank Trent, and he left, she upset, because he left the secretary all by herself in the dorm. The officer left the secretary and told, told him, the, the principal called me, she said, Councilwoman, I'm telling you, you got to do something, I need to see the chief. Left the secretary all there in the building by herself and told that he had another, he had another caller, and more important, he had to leave, and she had to look after the building back up. They was trying to get a probe to put over the plow, waiting on somebody, some superintendent officer to come out, but they need to, uh, Knox has been a target, this three, this three weeks and less than a month, they, they wiping them out.
Some, some.
Maya?
No.
Uh?
A school boy is, uh, what, uh?
You're doing that.
Who, who, who?
Say it, say it.
I just told you, I told you this about.
It's turning out.
Turning out.
Okay.
Turning out.
Trying to turn your mouth, yes.
You know, Miss Thompson over there.
Okay, okay, I'm thinking about birds, dude.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and you know, it don't make no sense, you know, this lady here, she leave it anyway, she, she never seen anything, this principal, she had worked so hard, this is her last year, she going back to Huntsville. She said, it, it don't make no sense for, uh, they breaking in the school like that, you know, trying to take care of kids.
Okay, also too, uh, I would check tomorrow, see what we have, what we can.
She been, we been, she wanna meet with the, the chief, because she wants to know why the officer leave her secretary in the building by herself, and she wanna know why the officer didn't come. The alarm went out, the man stayed in the building three hours, and he walked away with all this stuff, if they hadn't got him at Bosco with the receipt, he would have got away.
He write receipts?
You know, he had a receipt, they dropped.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, and, and they checked, she, she had, uh, some of Mrs. Brown's personal stuff in the backpack, so that's how they got.
I could've say he a business entrepreneur, writing receipts, starting business.
Also, for the concern agenda tomorrow, uh, let me give a overview of what we put on the, uh, the property abatement, the parking spot, the FAM, uh, application, and SOD graduation. And also, Councilwoman, uh, Jackson, who emailed me about the, uh, opening, I mean, uh, free, uh, information act. Yes, sir.
You got bird school with the, uh, empathy?
Yeah, 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 it did, it did, it did.
President, excuse me, I have to go.
Yeah, so you can add, we put on the.
Yeah.
What's that?
Bird school, they, they have a May Day, they just wanna use the inside of the fence?
They, they've been doing it for the last five years.
It's part of education.
It's all our education community, so I put that on that also. All right, anything else?
That, that first one you said was property abatement, that was.
That's, uh, Mr. Hicks, uh.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
All right, so hopefully we'll be sure tomorrow.